I'm gonna begin prior to huh?
I got fifty-eight.
Can't start early, Mark.
That's right.
Bill Stuckert's not here yet.
All right. Carter's were here, but they.
They don't want to sit in the sun either. So you had mentioned, I know we haven't started technically yet, but you've mentioned that most of the fronts of the buildings are the property line. Is that the case with everything in these six blocks on both sides of the street?
I mean, for a lot of it, yeah.
Okay.
There's some exceptions, but it's only.
The Home Care Matters building.
Obviously, it's not, it's not in lines. Right.
Food place.
But like Doug Godwin, for instance.
Correct.
He's got a bay window that hangs out further than what the signs would allow.
Correct.
I'm just, I'm just clarifying though, and then your awnings on some of the places also.
Well.
Permit awnings, don't we?
Correct, canopy and awnings.
But not a sign.
Well, see like that awning at the old Baumells is grandfathered in, but the rest of them that you can have the canopy. But like Bakers and.
The Admiral.
Three is not, has never been permitted.
Bakers and First Federal have been permitted.
Have they?
Yeah, they were when we did the ARRA project downtown.
Now it's five o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, call the door, three of us are present, one missing, there you go.
Okay, well, as pointed out in the letter that I wrote to you guys dated the twenty-fifth of July. Just some inconsistencies in the sign code as it pertains to signs in the downtown business district.
Right.
The, the main issue being that general requirements for signs in our sign code state that no part of any sign shall be placed in, over, or extend onto any public right of way. As we were just discussing, in the majority of cases in the downtown business district, the, the building line abuts directly to the right of way. So in theory, any sign, whether it's this thick or a projecting sign that sticks out six feet, is, is over top of the right of way and thereby not permitted. So my question was, and I don't know that anybody here necessarily has the answer because these were put together by that ad hoc committee. And in what, 2015 or whatever it was. As to, my question was how, how it was intended to be enforced, what, what the intended outcome was by this. In looking at the fact that freestanding signs, or I'm sorry, wall signs, canopy and awning signs and projecting signs, are all permitted explicitly in the downtown business district, my assumption would be that it was their intention to allow these types of signs. But like I said, it's inconsistent with it being over top of the right of way.
You on that committee?
What?
The ad hoc committee for signs?
Oh, but when was that?
I think 2015.
Yes.
Do you have any recollection to any discussion about?
No, I mean, I don't even recall that there, there, there is the inconsistency, inconsistency in there. You know, right of ways and whatnot. I know that at that point in time, we approached their businesses and we asked them to remove like frames and things like that that they had that were still projecting, that were no longer maybe like a part of the business anymore. They had removed, they had removed the actual sign itself out of it, but left some of the hardware and things up there on. And we encouraged anyone that could to remove that. And you know, because it.
That being a removal of an obsolete sign, I believe is what that was referred to as.
The thing was is that when we were back and doing the ARRA project down here, one of the things that we wanted to do is we wanted to get rid of the clutter in the downtown area. And that's why that if you see this beautiful look now down through the, through town where really the street lights don't even interfere. I mean, they're as big as they are, that you really don't see them that much, you know, they're, they're very downplayed. And it's not like we did a big ornate sign, uh, uh, street signs or did any of the poles that would make them stand out in any way. We just sort of wanted them to meld into the look. I remember the very first time that I came down Sandusky Avenue after they had done the first couple of blocks here and I went, whoa, look what all is missing down here. And it just gave the whole downtown area a whole different look. And I think that's one of the things when we talked about the signs in that during that time period is we just absolutely were not aware that, that other one got stuck in there that said no signs.
Yeah.
Uh, in, in the right of way because we certainly allowed canopies and we allowed awnings at, you know, at various buildings. You can see them right here.
All over the place.
And they had a, they had a beautiful homey look and feel to the downtown area.
I was gonna say personally, I think it's part of the charm of the downtown area are those types of signs. But in my position, I can't use personal opinion and I have to enforce it as written. And I don't, I don't think we necessarily want to prohibit them from being able to put up new signs for their businesses, so that's why.
Well, we actually, when the Kroger park or the Kroger gas station was built, they approached us because the former owners of that property had a big sign on the side of their building. They wanted to put up a freestanding billboard on a property close by there that they had access to. And that was denied because we didn't want anything like that in the downtown area because we wanted to keep it. I mean, you can tell what all of our businesses are, that I think they're all, they're all, the ones that want to get their names out on their awnings have done so. And the, I know the new owners then of American Shoe are the ones that are, have, I was in there the other day talking with them. And I can understand they want maybe a little bit more signage than what they currently have. But I think we need to take a look at that and see, see what, what we, we want to say are the things that are feasible in this downtown area.
Landon, do you have a recommendation how you see the wording being changed? I mean, do we want to allow blank number of feet out, extruding from the, or extending from the building? Or do we want to allow a certain percentage of the sidewalk area or the, the right of way to be utilized? I mean.
Well.
Which section are you looking at right now?
This is the general requirements for permanent signs, 1191.08. If you guys have that.
I don't have it at all. Oh yeah, I do, 1191.08. It's on the second to the last.
Ours just goes to point oh four.
No, go back.
Front page.
Right there it is.
Oh, out of order.
Out of order.
So you can see that under the general requirements, um, take projecting signs, for example, there are size requirements that are, um, that go for all the districts in which they're able to be placed. So the twelve square feet in size for a projecting sign has to be a minimum of nine feet above ground level. It can't project more than six feet outward from the face of the building. That is true for the downtown, the neighborhood, the general and the LIC districts and, and all the districts that they're permitted. So.
Projecting would be one that sticks out.
Correct.
Perpendicular to the face of the wall.
Where's those, where's those signs?
Uh, C.
And not out more than six feet outward from the building face.
Correct.
So we're keeping our sidewalks out here are more than six foot. Yes, so we're allowing them to come out so far.
So in that specific case, I, you know, I would feel pretty comfortable with, with that being okay in the downtown business district. So in that case, it's just a matter of letting it be permitted, some kind of exemption for that right of way.
Okay.
Clause. Now canopies and awnings are a little bit different. They're the only real requirement there being it's, it's nine foot above the ground level. So if we would like to see in particular something in the downtown business district that would restrict it from being the distance that can, that it can extend from the face, something like that six foot mark that's in the projecting signs already, you know, I don't think that's a bad idea.
Right, we don't want Bruce to hit his head.
For instance, you know, the castle, the auction's over there. I bet you that's not quite nine feet. I know it's not nine feet tall.
Well, that door, how tall is that door?
Eighty-one inches is your standard door.
It's up a step.
Okay, there are a few steps.
There are two steps since we saw him walk out.
It might be.
But that was also grandfathered because that was.
I know, I'm just saying so we look at it to see what it looks like.
Yeah.
Be nice to put tape measure to it.
I got tape measuring truck.
There are several.
I intended to bring one, but I forgot.
There are several businesses along there that have step ups to get into their, into their business, especially it seems like on that side of the street.
Yeah, and then, so then wall signs are kind of the same. I mean, they have, they have the requirements for the districts in which they're permitted, being that it can't extend out more than twelve inches. And then it can't exceed thirty-three, thirty-three percent of the surface area of the wall, no more than five hundred square feet. So you might want to look at that.
You're just thinking of wall sign.
Smaller wall signs in the downtown business district.
I don't think, I don't think smaller, I mean, if I own a business, I, I think I should have the right to, to use my entire, whether it's sixty feet or forty feet or twenty feet. I think that's my building, but.
The Greek guy used it.
Aesthetically, that is wrong.
I understand that.
I mean, it was bad enough when Huntington Bank put their, that lime green thing all the way around their building. I mean, that was, that was almost intrusive onto the square, into the square as far as.
Unfortunately, we have no restrictions or requirements on lime, lime green or neon paint.
But I, my, my theory that I'm getting, or my, my point I'm trying to make is your standard box sign that is illuminated is gonna be six to eight inches.
I think so, maybe even less than that.
Yeah, maybe now with LEDs.
Four inches or so, I think is what I typically see come through the office.
But I, that's where I think what we're being asked to.
Yeah.
To address at this point.
And I, I would think, you know, twelve inches, like you said, it's probably not gonna come up to that in a typical sign proposal.
I'm thinking what makes it.
So if we're okay with the other things, then again, in this case, it's just making an allowance for the downtown business district to allow them to place it over top of the right of way. Again, even if it is just that four inches in most cases.
This says it already allows them twelve inches.
Are there any restrictions in here as far as lighting?
Such sign may not extend beyond the building setback line. And then in the general requirements.
Right.
Can't be over top of the public right.
So that's what needs changed.
I saw, I got mine here.
Or an exemption particularly related to businesses.
If you have an exemption, does that mean they go to a hearing?
You could make it that way if you want.
Do you think that's in our best interest?
It would add a layer of oversight.
Yes.
To, to it.
Especially since then if we put the BZA in there, then that.
That.
Yeah, it takes it weird.
Essentially, it would be subject to BZA approval or it would be a conditional, a conditional thing in the downtown business district. If, the only thing there being, do you think it's fair to make them have to go to the BZA just because they're in the downtown business district?
Well, that's the only way we can control it too. I mean, if, if we, if we just.
We could set some, I mean, we can set some standards that I can go by, but they would have to be specifically spelled out as in the code as to what I can allow in downtown business.
Right, and if they're wanting an exception. And it'd be a case by case basis, just like we do on, you know, the outside dining and.
I would say whatever standards you want to see would probably need to be stuck to in this instance.
Correct.
So maybe, you know, do, do they have to submit a sign permit to the BZA? Where they, where they review and make sure it meets all the standards or is that something?
Not like a bad idea.
On one hand, on the other hand, I say are we creating too, too much work? I mean, if you just look at these general requirements and allow those.
If they can, if they can submit the permit to me and it's easy enough for me to say that yes, this meets the general requirements that we want to put in the downtown business district. I don't know that it's necessary that they go through that extra step, that after extra fifty dollars.
I intend to agree with you.
If they come in to you and are opening a new business here, they have to get some kind of something from you, don't they? Anybody that's opening a new business?
Technically, it's only required when it's a change in use. And most of the time it's gonna be retail to retail or whatever the case may be. So a, a change of use permit isn't really necessarily required. Unless it is something where it's going to completely different use, where it's not retail, it's this, or where it's not a restaurant, it's this.
Or it's like the old Lawson's, it's being changed because of parking issues.
Mm-hmm, yeah, exactly.
So not necessarily all the time, but.
Okay, but I mean, like when they do, then you would be aware that you need to make, make them aware of the fact that if you're going to be changing signage, that there are rules regarding that. So I think, I think you have a punch list, don't you?
Provided they, provided they.
Come in.
Provided they take the initiative or I'm made aware that there's gonna be a new business there, yes, I would definitely share that information with them.
What does say about twelve square feet?
Uh, and projecting signs?
C, projecting signs. So you just have a four by three sign that projects out no more than six feet from the, from the building face is what's.
That hasn't had anything to do with a sign on the face.
That would be a Lawson's. Is a projecting sign a sign that's ninety degrees offset to the building face?
Perpendicular to the building face, correct.
Or one that's maybe similar to what the bank marquee is, it's not flat, it could be not, not ninety degrees, but.
I don't know if it's, if they're literally defined in here or not, but yes. Means any sign that extends outward perpendicular to the face, so I would assume that one of those is probably considered.
I would think that's a predicting sign.
Now, the horseshoe had a sign that blew off in the spring and it was probably out further than that six feet. Are they allowed to put that back up?
Technically not.
Well.
Within X number of days.
I, I mean, there's, there's non-conformity clauses that relate to structures and I would have to read it to see if that exactly would go along with signs.
That was a Pepsi-Cola sponsored sign.
Generally, everything is two years, isn't it? If it's been.
It says any, any building or structure.
And as far as having a sign across the front of the building.
That's damaged by an act of God, maybe restored and rebuilt and continued as a non-conformity. Provided that it's, it's six months in the time of damage and completed within a year.
They might be coming up on to six months there pretty quick.
I would say they would likely fit into that.
But the guy gets started.
Yeah. If not, then they would be subject to, to losing their grandfather and it would have to adhere to the, to the standards for the downtown business district as they currently, currently are.
And that one could have possibly been a very, very old sign.
Yeah.
I mean, if she's been there for.
Is the right of way on, off of the main drag, this, the same on the building edge?
It may, it may be different, but I, I think up there.
Cause that was a state highway, so it's still probably the same right of way.
I think up there, there's still building faces is basically right on top of the right of way line.
I would think so, just the way that's all squared. So where is it written, Landon, that, that it's not allowed currently?
That would be in, under general requirements, permanent signs, what you're looking at there. Item H is general requirements. Number three.
H three, okay.
Is location.
And this body has the ability to, to change that document?
Uh, plating committee.
Send, send it to full council, I should say.
Correct, and then, yeah, you guys would, you know, ask for legislation that Rob would draft to reflect the changes you want to see or the way I'm supposed to enforce it.
I, Mark, I think, I think the easiest way to do that is to change H three to, to say signs must conform to chapter eleven ninety-one, or however you want to word it, pointing back to this of the codified ordinances.
Or do you just want to put that in there for the downtown business?
That would, that's the other.
Downtown, just say it's for downtown business.
Yeah, right. I mean, the option, the, the way I saw it was the options are to add, either add something to each individual item, A, B, and C for wall signs, canopy signs, projecting signs for the downtown business district, or add an exception into H three that, you know, allow for these in the downtown business district. But that does not apply to them.
No part of any sign shall be placed in, over, or extend onto any public right of way, any, any, any more than what is allowed under the codified ordinances.
Well, it's not.
Eleven ninety-one point oh eight.
These are, these are for buildings that don't have the building face that extends over the public right of way.
Oh.
See what I'm saying?
I do. So your recommendation would be to, to add what wording where?
Well, I'd say you can go two ways. I mean, if you want to have something in there for the canopies and awning signs as to how far they can extend out, if it currently isn't anything, I would recommend making something to that effect as well. But in lieu of making specific exemptions for the wall signs, canopy signs, projecting signs, I would say add to H three. No part of any sign shall be placed in or over or extend onto a public right of way, other than those that are located in the downtown business district. Per, if it's just if they, if you want just to be these and that's it, or if you want to have some kind of additional oversight through the BZA process, I would leave that up to your guys' discretion.
For other kind of businesses, are you trying to restrict signs in downtown business?
I'm not trying to restrict anything.
Well, that's, that's what I'm wondering, so you're, you're just referring to downtown businesses?
Right, because in most cases out elsewhere in, say, a normal general business district, if someone puts up a sign, it's not going to be in the right of way.
It's usually back on your property.
Being down here, there is no free space, so it conflicts with what's written.
Well, like even when Krogers went in, there's this back on their property, it's on the other side.
And that's a, and that's a good requirement to have in other districts because it makes sense. But in the downtown business district, it's just not feasible.
Well. Canopies, do we, you, you think it's a good idea to restrict how far out they may go?
Well, I mean, if we don't.
Does the state, if I remember correctly, when they were going through the deal with Normans, doesn't the state only allow you within X amount of feet?
That's a question I can't answer.
Well, if you're talking about a canopy and there's no posts out here, then that's a different game than if you're putting posts out on the sidewalk because then you're.
But they're both considered a canopy on here, aren't they?
I don't know, are they by definition?
I think so.
I don't know how that'd be considered a canopy.
A canopy which is, is supported independently by posts or columns is open on all sides and intended only for shelter or ornamentation. A canopy sign is a sign that's attached to a part of the roof of such a structure. So in all technicality, Castle Auctions canopy just doesn't have any posts. But Bakers does, and they both by this fall under canopy. I mean, you don't want it so close to the curb that people are hitting their car doors on it.
Or we could make it so that you don't have any post held canopies. They all have to be supported without the posts.
I like that idea, I don't know, in, you know, as an engineer, I don't know how big of a task that would be to build one that's self-supporting.
Well, I mean, that's how Baumells had it, that's how.
All of these down through here.
So the movie theater had one too, but it was through some pretty intense ironwork.
But I'm saying, you know, it, it can be done because.
I mean, we're seeing canopies and awnings right here that are, that are supported on the wall.
Yeah.
And I think those are, I think those are fine, but like you, I agree, you know, once you get them put, putting posts into the public right of way on the sidewalk, you, you come into issues with BZA compliance and you come into issues with other.
Well, and like you said, if you have it too close to the curb, you're banging your car doors. If it's in the middle, then you're, you're interfering with the ability for, for traffic to, to move on the sidewalk.
Well, you know, as far as the heaviest one out there concerned would be Romanoff's because that's a copper, that's copper. And they were able to do the, they were able to do the structure to make sure, make sure that it was attached and attached to the same.
I do like removing posts or columns from.
I would remove the posts and columns from the downtown business district because of the limited sidewalk we have. I mean, if we had four more feet of sidewalk on each side, that'd be a different story. We can keep them back, but we don't really have that much room. And like you said, car doors and people trying to get around them, it's gonna be hard enough.
Do all these changes that we come up with go into one motion or separate motions for each change?
Well, we can make all the changes, it can go into one piece of legislation.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it can go into one piece of legislation. There's no problem with that, we're just amending this one and then we'd be amending this one. And each one would be a separate section in the, in the legislation.
So we can do separate motions in this meeting and then they could all be one piece of legislation?
Yes, yes. And then when it's presented to full council, it can be presented either way you want it to be presented, each item alone or as a.
I think it's one piece of legislation makes it easier.
Well, I mean, we could still do one piece of legislation.
Presenting it.
Present it individually to, to the full council.
I would, I'd like to make a motion that, going back to what we were discussing a moment ago with Landon's suggested changes to allowing this as a, what is, did you say as a condition in the downtown business use?
Oh, that's, that's up to you. I mean, you can explicitly allow it as an exception in H three, except in the downtown business district. While still being in line with the restrictions of the general requirements otherwise.
That's where I would, yes, I, I would like to motion to move that we, we make that change to make it an allowable use in the downtown business district with the wording that he just stated.
Okay. My question is, if we make this motion and go, do you want to see it before we bring it to full council?
Yeah.
I mean, at our next committee meeting?
I'd like for us to review it.
We'll see if that legislation will bring it to the committee first.
That's, that's fine with me, that's why I wanted to see it before we send it to.
Yeah, it'll come out as a legislation.
Okay. All right, I have a motion. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that one passed.
So if that's going to be the case, then I would assume we need some kind of requirement for the canopy and or awning signs as to how, how far they can project out, you know?
Without a post?
It's my, I can't make the motion, but that's my recommendation.
Well, there again, would it be better to say fifty percent of the right of way? I mean, that way, if you've got a bigger sidewalk, put a bigger canopy up. If you've got a smaller sidewalk, put a smaller canopy up. The fifty percent would, would alleviate.
And as long as it's nine feet up, like it says on the signs, and nine feet up and only fifty percent, it's, people still gonna wa, without posts, I don't see a problem.
I like that.
Not to exceed fifty percent of the sidewalk.
Correct.
Do you say, do you state it as a sidewalk or do you state it of the right of way?
Yeah, say the right of way, the right of way is the street too. We don't want it out the street.
All right, so fifty percent from the face of the building to the curb?
To the curb, yes.
Because there are places that don't, may not have sidewalk. For instance, I know that the old Home Care Matters building on the side street, he would like to remove a lot of that sidewalk because all that concrete needs to be replaced. He'd like to not make it as much sidewalk and put some grass next to the building. So if we start, I, from the face of the building to the curb, I think.
That'd be good.
What section is that in?
That would be, uh, one one nine one point oh eight.
I'd kind of like to see, I would like to see what some of those overhead signs are that project out.
The height or the?
The projection.
Why don't we walk out and at least take a look, we can eyeball it and know if some of them are fifty percent or more.
Yeah.
I don't think that we have, but we can look.
We can look down the street.
I don't want to just start throwing guns.
Right, agreed. Of course, anything that's current is really not gonna. Clearly though, clearly the canopy's already taken down in a manner that doesn't require posts.
Yeah, oh, I know. Bakers probably could have.
I seen him unload the safety today off the back of a tow truck. Looks like he didn't get far with it.
Looks like he didn't get far with it.
Ninety-four inch, ninety-three inch, three quarter. So it's.
Eight four?
Uh, it's seven.
Seven ten.
Seven ten.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that wasn't.
See, that's probably.
Thank you. That's good.
I got it on video.
I pick up the rear.
It's seven foot, would you say seven six?
Seven, yeah, it's like seven ten.
Seven ten.
And the sidewalks, what?
But it's only, it's less than fifty percent.
Less than fifty percent of the sidewalk.
Fourteen percent side, fourteen feet, and it's only, uh, six, five and a half to six feet out. It's just an optical illusion. No, that's only seven, seven ten.
Okay.
So it's less than. Put three too short. I don't know what the right answer is, I don't know, I think fifty percent is an easy number.
Yeah.
And I don't think it's, I don't think fifty percent of that.
What happens if the state comes through, redoes the road in, in fifteen years, and takes another eight feet off of the sidewalk? Could happen.
If you're gonna punch downtown businesses, it's probably gonna have to.
Well, that's why I say, if you give it a percentage, if that changes at any point.
It doesn't matter.
I, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Would move that we remove the, uh, allowance of posts and add the wording that, uh, canopies may extend up to fifty percent from the face of the building to the curb line.
Yeah, I second that.
I, we'd also like to obviously see that before we move it on.
Yeah.
Just to make sure.
Yeah, all those, I wanna.
We need to see all this before we move it on.
And, uh, I was gonna say, would, would you be able?
Are you gonna change this one on projecting signs that says six foot outward? I mean, that's what it says here.
No, I think projecting signs are okay.
Oh, the projecting signs are okay?
Yeah, because they still, they can project six feet, but they can only be twelve square feet.
Yeah.
And they got the nine feet up.
Yeah, which we have some now that are much larger than twelve square feet.
And project further than.
Yes, and I think, I think the Sherwin-Williams was added after this was passed too.
Who was?
The Sherwin-Williams.
It's more than twelve square feet.
Because if you remember, the sign that used to be on the building was flat to the building. Well, the metal piece is still there. No, I'm talking about when it was, uh, I'm, I'm going way back.
I'm going back to a grocery store.
What was it, what was it after the grocery store? Sears?
Sears, yeah.
They had S E A R S in separate signs.
Okay.
On the front, but it went up, extended above the roof line.
And then it was on the front of it.
Yeah. But I, uh, I, you know, I, I don't think that that's hateful. Twelve square feet's almost too small, to be honest with you.
Twelve square feet or was it twenty square feet?
Twelve.
Twelve.
That ain't very big.
No, and if you look at the ones we have now, I bet you we don't have any that are twelve or under.
Three by four.
You know, you got Sherwin-Williams, you got Lee Shoes, you got, I have a picture in my head, what else is?
The video sign sticks out a little bit on to them, but not much, and that was planned, I think, when they put the video store, they didn't want it out there on the way.
Just enough to catch the eye.
Yeah.
Do you think twelve is too small, or we should go larger?
I think it's still pretty small.
Well.
I mean.
What do you think would be exceptional, acceptable?
Well, when you look at, to me, when I look at the Sherwin-Williams sign, I don't find that to be unacceptable, because it's clean, but if it were a nasty old sign and it's that big, it would look hideous.
And that's more.
And I don't think we, I'm sorry, but I don't think that's something we want to really, really encourage, because we don't.
No, nor do I, nor do I think a ton of people would take advantage of that.
Yeah, I don't either.
The cost alone.
Yeah, I think the twelve square feet, if they wanna put something up, they can, they come and get to BZA and get a variance. Then come to the BZA and get a variance.
I'm happy with that.
Yeah, so that's there, yeah.
So, but what, where does it say that that is, is allowed, even if they do show it to the BZA, the RA have it written as twelve, twelve square feet?
I think just generally in, in the variance portion, variances to this chapter may be granted.
Yeah, it says one sentence it says, yeah. To the procedures and policies set forth in.
That's the order.
I just don't.
Set forth in the BZA, so it's already covered.
I'm more lenient.
Yeah, I was thinking twenty, it would be more than acceptable and not ridiculous, the large size, that's the sign, size that we allow for banners.
I mean, twenty is only four by five, I mean, that's, this is six foot, so, I mean, five by four, that is not that large.
Alright, well, you're already allowing it to project six feet out of the way.
Yeah, yeah, that's kinda what I, or, or what about instead of a square footage, I was just thinking out loud, but instead of a square footage, a projecting sign, again, can't extend more than fifty percent. And has to be at least nine feet off the ground. I'm picturing like the, the Chicago Theater sign, something like that, that's taller and skinnier, now granted, you've still got a square footage of that, but.
Well, that would, I think square footage would be somewhere in there, and then we can grant variances if, if there's enough for it. If the people don't object, if the people object, then it doesn't get done.
Alright, well, if nothing else, at least make it there.
The option is there for them to appeal it.
Let's go, let's go with, I'd say twenty, twenty square feet would be a good start. If not, then they can always appeal it.
Did you make that motion, Bruce?
Yes, I made that motion to increase the size from twelve square feet to twenty square.
I will second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Twenty square feet. For Bruce. Okay, full business. And we already said that the canopies aren't going to exceed fifty percent of the sidewalk, it'd have to be nine feet.
And no posts, fifty percent from the building face to the curb.
Building face to the curb.
Sounds good to me.
And this is just for downtown business district?
Correct.
Okay.
You can't build a canopy at your house.
Um, I mean, I think that addresses the majority of it, so once we see what's, what Rob writes up and discuss it at the next committee meeting, but I think that.
I think that's pretty good.
In your opinion, we've discussed everything that you felt was contradictory?
I think so.
Okay.
I mean, the major point was just simply the right of way, you know, if you read it how it's written, then.
Wouldn't they have been able to get a BZA variance for the right of way with what you just said?
I, Rob said, yeah, Rob said the language with no part of the sign being pla, you know, the way that it's worded, he didn't think that they could legally give that variance or something like that.
Because of the other paragraph that was in there.
Probably so. I, I asked Rob about that, and he said he didn't feel that the BZA was the appropriate place for something like that. And probably because it's, it's extending into the public right of way, you know, that makes things different.
I was just gonna say, could we confirm with ODOT that the changes we're making don't violate any of their rules? Makes sense before we pass legislation?
Yeah.
That'd be a good idea.
I, I don't think it will, to be honest with you.
I don't think it will. My God, if it would, I'd feel foolish that we passed a law that we gotta come back and pass to change.
I really don't think they're gonna come in here and make this a four lane, so, cause it isn't wide enough.
Now, they didn't have a problem when we were redoing the downtown street in the first place, but in, you know, when we said it, well, it was at the time, it was out. Gary Alexpole's down there, he said, oh, you can keep your canopy, cause it wasn't a stable highway, so they wasn't allowed to have it, it was some of us.
Okay?
Okay. Alright, I think so, unless, unless there's something I'm missing.
Entertaining motion?
To adjourn?
Yeah.
I was gonna wait till the sun hit ya.
It's already on me.
I ain't waiting.
So moved.
Alright, it's like.
Alright, will you adjourn that? Five forty.
Okay.